I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for March 23rd, 2021. Could you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Co., could you please call the roll?
Okay, President DiSimone?
Here.
Uh, Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
At this time, we'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
We have one this evening in person and one online. The first one we have is Chris Madrano. In regards to the Grand Subaru car wash.
You tell me when.
You go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Chris Madrano. I am the property manager for Brook Forest Apartments. I'm here with a few of my residents and a video I wrote. I have for you guys to give because they wanted to give their personal testimony as to how the new car wash is going to negatively impact the quality of life. Me personally, I feel for these people who were hard to pay the rent. And will not be able to go home to a nice peaceful place, especially those who work on third shift and sleep during the day. This new operation, as you can see from the picture, will be located approximately forty feet away from their bedroom windows. Not good. Just imagine how horrible this will be in the summer months when they will not even be able to open their bedroom windows to get some fresh air. And instead, they will get an earful of constant noise. Mr. Johnson at the public hearing last time mentioned that the sound of the car wash should be as loud as a dishwasher. Which after doing a little research on my own, I found that a standard dishwasher is like fifty-two decibels. And on the other hand, I found that with any car wash, noise is something that cannot be avoided with it having water pumps, hydraulics, vac motors, air dryers. And especially the blowers. They all contribute to the eighty-nine decibel that a standard car wash has. So I'm just wondering just how many decibels this new operation you are considering placing will really be. I hear the blowers, the blowers play a big part to this equation. Making the noise even louder. So I'm curious to know just how many blowers they are planning to use. Another thing that really bothers me a lot. Is the fact that this car wash is going to upset the clean look of the property and will probably affect my renting as well. Not many people want to move into an apartment located right next door to a noisy car wash. But Mr. Johnson also stated at the public hearing that Sue Baru just wants to be a good neighbor. Well, if that is the case, they should start by being considerate of the neighboring population. This is not about money. We are talking about, we're talking about people. Even the homeowners on the northwest corner of our property are very upset as the lot has taken away their privacy as well as has lowered the value of their home. As of now, all day long, all we ever hear is the constant beeping from the Subaru dealer as they try to locate cars instead of using some sort of database. Now with this car wash being put in place, just imagine how much noisier. It will so please, all I'm asking for you is that you consider all these very valid points that I'm making. Before you vote, because no one should have to live without being able to fully enjoy their apartment or their home. I would like for you to consider placing the car wash on the other side attached to your present building. As we feel we are being discriminated against as our property is made up of retired people looking for peace and quiet as well as young kids and it also is made-
Three minutes, can you wrap up your comment?
I'm sorry.
Can you come to a conclusion that's three minutes?
One second, I'm almost done.
All right, go ahead.
As well as kids and it also is made up of a community with lesser means willing to work whatever shift they are offered just to make ends meet. And then to come to this, why upset these people? Why not put this on the opposite side near a big business such as Chase Bank? I'm just hoping you will do what is right as we are counting on you to listen to our concerns and do what is more correct. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so the board knows, we did receive a video. We got it late. We couldn't get it out to you guys, but we will email it to the board as soon as the meeting ends. We have an online?
Yes, we have an online supplemental comment from Michael Sabino of ten seventy-five South Center Street. He states. Hi Scott, I do believe that the expansion should not be approved tonight. There are not enough concerns from the residents. There are enough concerns from the residents on things that weren't putting it on hold and discussing further. What they're saying about the noise being equivalent to a dishwasher is very questionable. This process that Bensonville has where you have a meeting. Where people get to voice their concern and then you just vote and override those concerns is not the process that makes your residents feel like they have a voice. That's a process that says, quote, let them complain and we'll make a minor concession or two and then we'll do what we want anyways, end quote. It was very apparent that your minds were ninety-nine percent makeup going into the meeting. It has all the looks of no matter how bad this is for the residents, nothing is going to be done about it. I made another video that shows how this was handled in a town that gives their residents a voice. You may think it's too much, but on the other hand, you should certainly feel that what Grand Subaru has been doing is over the top. And nobody in Bensonville government has been fighting for their citizens. It's all about keeping Grand Subaru happy so the money keeps coming in. We've been, quote, sold out, end quote, slash sacrificed for the Grand Subaru expansion. If you guys are going to provide a good fence and solutions for us, that should all be decided and run by the residents before the approval process. You shouldn't just approve it and tell us, quote, we'll take care of it, end quote. Asking us to trust that is not responsible, reasonable, considering what has been done so far. I've been talking with you about this for some time now. You have been very nice to me in those conversations and I appreciate that. I'm guessing you feel stuck in this, in this situation like you have no choice, but there is a reasonable choice here. Stop this process and let your residents have a voice in what happens in their neighborhood. It appears that you guys are completely scared to stand up to Grand Subaru in any way, like they will move and take their business with them. Why else would you let them run over your residents like you have? This is a terrible approach and sometime and something that will affect a lot of lives here. This is not something we're just going to forget about in a few weeks. This is a big life affecting event for some of us. That we're not just going to be able to forget about. If you guys do this right, we will learn that government can work. If you guys just roll over for the money, it will be a sad mark on how government works. I want to believe that you guys will stand up for residents and won't sell us out. Why shouldn't they be able to expand their business and make more money than have an impact on my home and the value I have in it? Am I, am I enjoyment of it when they could spend money to build something that would protect my investment? If it is costly and therefore makes their expansion less profitable, then why should you, we make and other residents who can afford loss for me or them? I hope you can do the right thing and stop this from going forward so we can have more meetings on this. Mike?
Thank you. Any other online comments?
There are no further online.
All the public comment?
There are no further public comments.
The video, yeah, on the video, right? I saw the video and like I said, I'll send it out as soon as we end the meeting. Are you doing it now? Okay. Well, this will conclude public comment at this time. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March ninth, two thousand twenty-one Village Board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
You have a second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee, trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yeah.
That's six.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred twelve dollars, twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
A second on the motion.
You have a second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Number one, under Community and Economic Development, is an ordinance amending various sections of Title Four of the Bensonville Village Code for purpose of animal regulation. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Have a motion.
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion, Scott?
Good evening, everybody. This is, as you said, a text amendment, we'll call it, to Title Four, which is actually the police section. This is done to just clean up some verbiage. To make the police section for home hens and home bees correspond with the new zoning ordinance. It puts all the licensing requirements, stays in the police section. And then the site planning and coop size and things like that stay in the zoning ordinance. So we respectfully request that you take a look at this and approve it.
Are there any questions on this from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance approving text amendments to men Title Ten, which is zoning ordinance, Chapter Two. Administrative bodies and procedures, Chapter Three, applications, Chapter Four, plan unit development, Chapter Seven, uses. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
I have a second on the motion.
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second discussion, Scott?
Yeah, text amendment, this is more up my alley. Couple of things here, changes the final PUD from just going directly to the Village Board. They're going back to the Community Development Commission and then to the Village Board. Invest some site plan review and the zoning administrator and staff unless that item does have to go to the CDC for some zoning entitlement and that would be done in the public forum. It changes the use tables to allow us a special use restaurants and retail in the I-1 district. Which the old code had and we took it out. We found that we needed it. We want to put it back in. Fixes a typographical error, Scrivener's error on swimming pools. Talks about the international building code as opposed to international residential codes. We're fixing that. And then I will call it a catch-all, but in the temporary use section. We added, I'll say, a catch-all to other, other temporary uses that might pop up that aren't specifically enumerated in the ordinance. We can look at those and approve those for a few days. Or a few weeks as the case may be. You do have the draft ordinance with all the strikeouts and additions in there and we recommend that be approved, sir.
Any questions from the board?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance approving site plan review and an amendment to a plan unit development at one eleven through one twenty-five West Grand Avenue. There a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, Scott, please take this.
Yeah, this is, of course, you've heard the neighbors here talk about this. Expandeds the, expands the Grand Subaru property to the east onto the former Elmer's Animal Hospital site. There's an existing, of course, veterinary office there that would be demolished for the new car wash, tunnel car wash should be erected there. The car wash is not for public use. It's for use by Grand Subaru. You can't just drive in there, get a car wash. Or as I said, my son bought a car there years ago. He can't say, hey, I bought my car here. Can I swing through here and get it washed? It's only for cars that have been serviced at Grand Subaru before the customer picks them up. Or I assume for the new cars when they come in off the truck, they'll clean them up. There are a number of departures from the code that are enumerated in your packet. And then there's a, I'll call it a relatively lengthy list of conditions that the staff and the CDC hammered out. And do have in there. I can go through those if you like. They are in your packet. The highlights of that is final architectural approval. You'll notice in the minutes of the CDC that some of the comments from the public were about the architecture and. You know, the plans that are distributed to the public are Xerox and photocopied and so the colors were a little drab. So we want to make sure those colors turn out okay. There is a tree preservation plan that was prepared and a fee in lieu of approximately eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars that will be paid for the removal of some of those trees. Hours of operation are limited to the hours of service, which are seven PM at the latest. We do talk about shielding the lighting, certainly along the east, the north, and then the west where the bus residential so that that meets our photometric code and they do that. We do have a departure. Well, I should say, we've got a condition that includes the fencing, the solid fence all around the perimeter of the property as it relates to single family and multiple family residential uses. Which is important as well that there's a condition to provide and are provide a hedge along that whole time. The original plan that the petitioner submitted did not have the plant screening to the east where the Brook Forest Apartment community is. Or on the further west end. So the condition the staff had and they've agreed to is to provide that hedge to the entire perimeter. Housekeeping, they provided ten-foot easement that should have been created years ago for water main and on the north property line and. We are going to figure out that porter issue with the beeping of the horn. So we've got a commitment to try to figure that out with them. I think I hit the high points there. If you have any questions, I can answer any of those that you may have.
I will interject and say that I think it's important for the board to know as well for the residents to know that we've had long conversations with Grand Subaru on this as well and, you know, they're. I said, let it, they believe that some of these things are putting on them are burdensome and onerous. That's how a good compromise often works out is everyone's not happy, but we are trying to get people. So I think it's important that the board understands that.
I think one of the main, I saw, I saw your video and I saw a couple of other videos. And a lot of the, what you guys are talking about was the screenage and the noise blocking and I know we've extended the fencing and we've extended all that to kind of compensate. I mean, trying to do all we can to make everybody happy. Everybody's not going to be one hundred percent happy, but that's what a compromise is. And to hear the word selling out and all that stuff, I don't, I'm trying to try to make everybody fit in together. I mean. Grand Avenue is a corridor of commercial. We encourage business and we encourage residents to be safe in their communities and I get it. But I think what Scott and the CDC has done is kind of held Grand Subaru fire. And I think they are not happy with all their decisions, but they're going to go and listen to what we have to tell them and I get it. I understand it. With that being said, any other questions from the board?
Hey Frank, what time, what time would that open? I know you said seven o'clock in the evening, Scott, was the time it closed. What time will that open?
I have it and I need to find it. When the service opens, I know my car dealer where I get my car service opens at eight or nine o'clock in the morning and I don't want to say that for sure without double checking, but. Normal business hours.
Mac will get back, well, he'll find it. We'll get it back to you.
Okay, cool, cool. And the last question that I had for that was, do we, do we have somewhat of a resolution as far as the beeping is concerned?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a human error factor, you know, the-
It's a human ease factor. They're doing it to ease easier for them.
Yeah, so we've got a commitment from management that they're going to work on training their employees to not do that. Are we going to eliminate it one hundred percent? No. We can make improvements though.
Okay. Did you find the time yet, Scott, or we'll get back?
No.
Thank you. You can get it to me later, Scott. That's fine.
Yeah, I'll find it. I apologize for that.
I have it right here. Monday through Thursday, the hours of operations are seven thirty AM to seven PM. Friday, seven thirty AM to six PM. Saturday, eight AM to four PM. Sunday, closed.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, Matt and Montana.
I think those are in the, it's in the ordinance, actually.
Any other questions from the board? I call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number four is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the twenty twenty-one Village of Bensonville zoning map. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just briefly, we do this every year about this time. We always thank our friends in Public Works for their efforts in putting this together for the village. There's a few, few changes, you know, the rezoning of Mohawk Terrace is identified as probably the largest change. But it is a statutory requirement of St. Louis that we do this yearly, so pretty much routine this year.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution declaring village-owned property located at three forty North Meyer Road surplus and directing its sale. There a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
I have a second.
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is the long vacant former well site on three forty Meyer Road. We've gone down this path before, most recently in twenty fifteen. You'll notice in the green sheet in your packet, we had a resolution to declare this property surplus. It's about twenty-two thousand square feet. We have a couple local businesses that have expressed interest in it. Village Attorney Montana suggested we should update that declaration of surplus as the old one was five years old, six years old now, pardon me. This property is in TIF twelve, of course, as village property is tax exempt, so if we are successful in selling this property to a local business, it'll put it back on the tax rolls, pardon me. And will increase the increment in TIF District Twelve. So we recommend approval of the resolution declaring this property surplus.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and a resolution is approved. Under finances, ordinance abating the tax here two-four levied for the year of twenty twenty to pay debt service on eight million, six hundred five thousand dollars. Series twenty twenty A general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source of the Village of Bensonville counties of Cook and DuPage, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
You have a second.
There being a motion, a second discussion, please. Welcome, Julie.
Good evening. Yeah, these are the two bond issues that we did to refund the two thousand eleven A and two thousand eleven B series. One of them covers TIF twelve, the other one covers a series of our SSAs. Essentially, we need to abate these taxes so they don't add them to the tax rolls because we fund these out of different funding sources. Being the TIF and the SSA themselves. So these just need to be taken care of now so that our twenty twenty taxes don't get affected.
Any questions on this from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance abating the tax here two-four levied for the year twenty twenty to pay debt service on four million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Series twenty twenty B general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source of the Village of Bensonville counties of Cook and DuPage, Illinois. There a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion? Same as Julie?
Yes.
Any questions? It was the same thing as the previous one. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six. The motion carries.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. We do not have a report of police department. Public Works has a resolution establishing guidelines and procedures for the twenty twenty-one senior disabled grass cutting program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
I have a second. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and second discussion. Muhul, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. If it's okay with you guys, I wanted to combine this item and the next three as they are all related to each other. And give one presentation on those four items. This first resolution in front of you is establishing the guidelines and procedures for the twenty twenty-one senior and disabled grass cutting program. It will start with our spring cleanup on April nineteenth, followed by weekly grass cuttings, edging on the hardscapes and fall cleanup in second week of November. So we are anticipating it to start on April nineteenth and end by sometime in second week of November. And the last grass cutting is anticipated around Halloween. There is a cap on the total number of applications we're accepting on this program. It's a hundred. So far, we have received fifty-six signups. The people that were actually on the program previously had the first dibs to return for the service. As I said, we have received fifty-six to date and that is open to the first hundred applications up until March twenty-sixth. After that, anybody who can qualify for the program, it will be open to everybody. The program guidelines are similar to last year, twenty-five dollars a cut, which is a fifty-fifty program. And then one change in the guidelines this year is we are introducing a ten percent penalty on a past two bounces over thirty days. And then a suspension from a program on a past two bounces over sixty days. The overall budget impact of the program will be determined on the number of signups we receive. And if you need any more information, more information is found on the village's website under Community tab on Senior and Veteran Services tab. With that, I'd like to request approval of the program.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with LAR Lawn and Ground Corp for the twenty twenty, the senior disabled cutting program. There a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
I have a second.
You have a second.
What being a motion and second discussion, please?
I had a quick question based on the first one I just thought of. If, so the program ends at the end of October, the last, the last cut. If the weather is nicer into November, does the program extend into November if the weather, if the grass continues to grow in November? Does it end automatically at the end of October?
No, we'll, we'll make that call by the, you know, at the time, but general, it's a general guidelines.
Okay.
On the stone.
Okay.
Historically, the big, the bigger issue has been when the leaves drop.
Yeah.
You've had some years where snow's been on the ground when the leaves have dropped and that's caused some problems, but that's just one of those things that there's some administrative permissions that we give Public Works to make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead on LAR, Muhul.
Yeah, so LAR is actually one of the three contractors that has been part of this program since we initiated it. And then we like to continue with them as they have done a good job on this program.
Okay, any discussion on LAR? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Panoramic Landscaping for the twenty twenty-one disabled grass cutting program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
You have a second.
There being a motion and second discussion?
Yeah, so Panoramic is also a returning contractor from the program last year and we're satisfied with their work and we like to keep them on.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola? Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Thomas Herrera Landscaping for the two thousand twenty-one Senior Disabled Grass Cutting Program. Do I have a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, Thomas Herrera Landscaping is, it also a returning contractor from the program last year. Uh, like I said, all three of these, uh, contractors have done a fantastic job over the last couple of years. And, uh, uh, they have expressed their interest to continue on in the program, so we would like to keep them on as well.
Okay, any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number five is an ordinance designated certain property as surplus and authorizing the disposition of, uh, the disposal of the same. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, uh, so this is, uh, uh, part of our fleet, uh, that is currently not active. And, uh, we would like to declare those surplus and try to seek, um, some kind of a sale or this, uh, disposal of these, uh, items, equipment slash anything, an online auction. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, no longer using them and we like to declare them surplus, so we can move forward with the, uh, the purchase of, sorry, the sale or the, uh, disposal of those items.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. We do not have a recreation report. A few presidential remarks, uh, Bencival has been named a Tree City USA for the thirtieth consecutive year. The National Arbor Day Foundation has named the Village of Bencival a Tree City USA. This designation is a confirmation of the Village of Bencival's commitment to preserving its trees. The National Arbor Day Foundation recognizes those communities that effectively manage their public tree resources. In order to be named a Tree City USA, community must meet four standards that provide structure for a community forestry program. Require that the program demonstrates success based on the state's forestry judgment and provide for an awareness and appreciation of trees among the residents of the community. Uh, one other thing is monthly aquatic memberships are on sale now. Individuals, families and seniors can enjoy unlimited access to swimming and programs at the Waters Edge Aquatic Center. Please see our website for more details or call Waters Edge at six three zero, seven six six, eight eight, eight eight. That concludes public comments. Do we have a village manager report?